Hey everybody, we are back for session two in our study in the book of James. So super excited you're here with us. I just want to say thank you so much for all of your support. And I pray that God speaks to you through these Bible studies. If you missed our session one of the book of James, go to our website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com and you'll see it there on our video playlist. Also, you can find it on our YouTube channel under the same name, WhitestoneChurchTX. And on our YouTube channel, we have all of our Tuesday, Thursday night Bible studies, Revelation, James, Hell, Is Jesus God? And our latest one now are the gifts of the Spirit, the baptisms of the Spirit, and now the book of James. So if you know somebody that's new to the Bible, or somebody that's never really studied the Bible, this is a great one to send them. And if you're like my friend Tony LaPlante, the Lord keeps putting you in the same Bible study over and over and over for a reason. So we'll get to a different book at some point, but God is good. God's got a special plan. So grab your Bible, grab your notes. For every session, we have notes. If you're not receiving those, again, go to our website, WhitestoneChurchTX.com. Contact us, send us your email, we'll send you notes. We'll try to do that even tonight periodically during the message or during the study. But if you missed, if you missed anything, we'll be happy to put you on our mailing list. Last bit of, last request is if you would, go to our YouTube channel. We need a thousand subscribers. We're somewhere around 700 right now. We need about a thou- we need at least a thousand subscribers on our YouTube channel so that we could go live on YouTube simultaneously to Facebook. So if you've never done that, if you would, please subscribe and maybe ask your friends to subscribe with us. So anyways, let's pray, we'll dive into James chapter one. We're in session two, our part two. So Father God, we love you. God, pray that you would speak to us tonight, that Father God, as we honor you and we declare that you are holy and you are righteous God, that Father, you would in return speak to us and God, open up your word to us like never before. God, would you just speak to us about our nation? About people, relationship? And God, just steady us, bring your peace, bring your wisdom, bring your discernment into what seems to be perilous times, crazy times. And so Father, we love you and we bless you in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen. Listen, the chapter, the session one of James was terrific, very powerful. Just to recap a little bit, in James chapter one, verse three, it says, "Consider it all joy, my brethren," or our verse two, "consider or count it all joy when you fall into various trials, knowing that the testing of your faith produces patience. And patience let it have its perfect work, that you may be perfect and complete lacking nothing." Listen, there are trials, there are tribulations in this life. It's, you know, sometimes we do a disservice to people when we say, hey, come to Jesus, life will be easy from now on. That's not true. Come to Jesus and God's gonna work out of you stuff that is corrupting your life or stuff that would get in the way of your relationship with us. Come to Jesus and God's gonna use you to change the world. But in order to change the world, he's gotta get some stuff out of us. And so we look at this first section of James with a little confusion, just saying, well, what do you mean, consider it joy? Listen, when we walk through trials, when we walk through struggles, God is perfecting something in us. Why would he want to do that? Because verse 12 says that we can receive the crown of life. God wants you to win. Being a Christian is, is very, very, has very little to do with getting saved. Obviously, getting saved is, is the best thing that could ever happen to you, the best thing that could ever happen to a person. But what is the Christian life after salvation? A lot of us just said the sinner's prayer. We got saved, we got baptized, we go to church, but nothing in our life has really changed. We're still the same old man or woman. God says, listen, I want to get out of you the stuff that keeps you from living a supernatural life. I want you to operate in the spirit. I want you to operate in the supernatural. I desire to push out of you, to purge out of you greed and lust and short temper, selfishness, pride, arrogance, fear, doubt, just, you know, just defeated mentality. I want to push those things out of you because I want you to win. I want you to achieve the purpose for which I created you. And in order for us to achieve the purpose for which we were created, God's gonna push out of us laziness and, and apathy and things that keep us from winning the prize. So when we look at James chapter one, verse 12, look at this verse. It says, "Blessed is the man who endures temptation." Endures temptation. "For when he has been approved, he will receive the crown of life, which the Lord has promised to those who love him." This crown of life is listed again in Revelation chapter two. It says this to the church in Revelation chapter two, "Do not fear any of those things which you are about to suffer. Indeed, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison, that you may be tested and you will have tribulation for ten days. But be faithful unto death, and I'll give you the crown of life." This crown of life is a reward. And so I want to talk briefly tonight about rewards, crowns, and judgment. Rewards, crowns, and judgment. What's gonna happen the day you die? I want you to think that through for a minute. A lot of, a lot of, a lot of things we know kinda and things we absolutely don't know. But what's gonna happen the day that you die? Your loved ones are gonna be sad here on earth. They're going to really have a change of life. However you depart could be a shock or could be anticipated. It could be a relief due to the fact that you may be suffering. It could be absolutely out of the blue, nobody ever saw it coming, and it just happens. On this side of eternity, there's gonna be this feeling of loss and this feeling of great sadness. But on your side of eternity, when you die, now, I should have prefaced this. I'm talking to people who have asked Jesus into their heart. I'm talking to the Christian, not the unbeliever. If you've not asked Jesus in your heart, it's gonna be a bad day on earth and a bad day in eternity. But if you've asked Jesus in your heart, the Bible says you'll go to heaven. So when you die, when you breathe your last breath here, you will breathe your first breath in eternity. And you're gonna stand in the presence of God. You're gonna see the city of Zion. You're gonna see the gates of pearls. You're going to see loved ones. You're gonna see disciples of the Lord. You're gonna see people that you know and you don't know. You're gonna see angels, you're gonna see colors. You're gonna hear, you're gonna see colors you've never seen before. You're gonna hear sounds that you've never heard before. But, but before we go talking too much about heaven, you're gonna stand at judgment. Now, at that judgment before God, God's gonna say to you, he's gonna say, is your name written in the Lamb's book of life? In other words, the first question is gonna be, are you saved? Have you received the blood of Jesus? So what's gonna happen is you're gonna stand before God in judgment. And he's going to say, has the blood of Jesus cleansed you or has it not? It's that simple. He's not gonna say, should I let you into heaven because you're a good boy or girl? You went to church, you're a nice, you're a good person, you really had good intentions? No, no, no. It's just simply, did you get cleansed by the blood of Jesus? Now, once that's over, once that part of judgment's over, we go to another part of judgment called the Bima seat of Christ. And at the Bima seat of Christ, it's when we receive rewards or we lose rewards. Your eternal lifestyle, your eternal life will be given rewards or the loss of rewards. Now, before you go super spiritual on me and say, well preacher, I don't care anything about rewards, getting saved is good enough for me, as long as it get in heaven, I'd just do everything because I love the Lord. I got it, amen, good, 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 good. But we're gonna read several verses. There are, I think, around a hundred verses in the Bible talking about rewards. And Jesus pushes us in the New Testament, in the Gospels, to receive and store up treasure in heaven to get rewards. He wants to reward us. So before you get super spiritual on us and say, well, you know, just getting into heaven's good enough. Listen, it's good enough for me too. It's good enough for all of us. None of us deserve it. Not talking greed, I'm not talking selfishness, but I am talking Scripture. I am talking what God wants from us. So please hear me on this. We're gonna stand before God and he's gonna judge us for what we have done as believers. Now, not as non, not non-believers. We won't be judged for our sin. That was covered by the blood of Jesus. But we will be judged based on what God gave us and how we operated on this earth. And one of those rewards is the crown of life. Now listen, you don't just get these crowns because you're a good person or God loves you. You get them based upon enduring, verse 12, it says, "Blessed is the man who endures temptation. For when he has been approved," this is, this has nothing to do with salvation. This is an approval process. This is, this is not approval like, do I love him? Do I not love him? Do I accept him? Not, no, no, no. This is a proving, this is a proofing thing. This is, this is like on the production line, the items coming down and the inspectors are inspecting it and testing it and probing it and seeing is it built to specs? Is it, is this thing gonna withdure the reason it was, it was created? And so he says, "When you've been approved, you will receive the crown of life." And I talked last time about Cassie and Rachel and how, how these two girls stood for the Lord at Columbine High School on April the 20th, several years ago. And they, they, not that God wants everybody to do it, but they died for their faith. Well, their testing came before that day. And on that day, they were found to, they were found true. They had been proven. Now, other people will be in heaven that denied Christ. And then they died later and they won't get the martyr's crown. So one of the misconceptions we have about heaven is that we're all going to be equal in rewards. Now, we're all equal in value, like a parent values all of their children. But some children do their chores and get the reward called an allowance. Other children choose not to do their reward. And come allowance day, they don't get their allowance or they get partial allowance or a portion of allowance based upon what they did as a child. Now, the child that got the full allowance versus the child that didn't do anything and doesn't get an allowance, they're still in the house, but they have different rewards. They have different levels of life. Now again, don't go super spiritual like, oh, well, I'm not really, I don't care if I live in a shack or a mansion in heaven. God just loves me anyway. Listen, that may sound good on the surface, but basically what you're saying is, I'm not gonna do what God created me to do. Oh, I'll just live in a shack. Well, that's the child that didn't do their chores. And somebody else had to do their chores. Think about it. Do you want to achieve the purpose for which you were created and be rewarded for it? Or do you want to not achieve the purpose for which you were created and let somebody else pick up the slack? Jesus has this perfect parable about that. It's about the master who gives his three servants money. He gives one five talents, one he gives two talents, and one he gives one talent. And he says, I'm gonna go away and when I come back, I expect that you invested my talent, which meant money. I expect that you used it for my glory. So the guy with five talents went and made five more talents. He doubled his money. And the guy with two talents went and made two more talents and doubled his money. But the other servant who had one talent hid the talent. So when the master comes back, he rewards the first two, but the third one, and I'll let you read it for yourself, the third one, he rebukes and says, "You wicked servant. You wicked servant. Prepare for torment, prepare for judgment, prepare for the devil and his angels. Prepare yourself." Now listen, I'm not gonna go theological on you right now, but I want you to think about the gravity of that parable. God has gifted you with the talent. You may have one talent, you may have two, you may have five. And those talents aren't, well, can you play the tuba? And are you good at karate? And are you really talented with numbers and via CPA? Those are types of talents, but this talent is a supernatural gifting that God's given you in a unique way to share the gospel with somebody. And it may be serving people, helping them with their taxes. But when their finances and their numbers are settled, God wants you to help settle their soul also. When you may be gifted as a great musician. When the concert's over, the question is, did you worship sex, drugs, and rock and roll? Or did you worship the Lord? Did you lead people into his presence or into the presence of something else? What are you using your gifting for? James tackles this in a great way, saying, listen, there's a crown of life. And when you stand before God, God's going to hold you accountable for what you did as a Christian, as a Christ follower. If that wasn't the case, what's the purpose of hanging around on earth once you got saved? If it's just about going to heaven, God would be cruel to leave you here another eighty years after you got saved and go through what this world puts us through. It would be cruel to say, ah, just stay down there and, you know, get all the toys you can get and, and have a great life and, and just experience that earth that I gave you. And just, no, no real purpose after you got saved. I mean, yeah, you got saved at fifteen, you got saved at twenty, you got saved at eight. Good job, now just live and just enjoy life. I don't really have a purpose for you. Um, you know, I'm gonna let the preachers do the preaching and the missionaries. But see, that doesn't make sense. What makes sense is that God saved you to go do works. And why he puts us through trials is to push out of us things that prevent us from achieving the goal of works. So when we look at James, he is pushing us. Listen, you're gonna stand before judgment. And at judgment, you're either gonna get or suffer loss. Revelation three says, "Be careful that no one takes your crown." Is it possible that God could give you a crown today, but you let the devil take it two weeks from today? Could God reward you and then you lose the reward? There's this old joke and I said it in a couple studies ago and I butchered it. I probably should reread it to kind of refresh my mind, but there's a preacher that goes to heaven. He dies one day, goes to heaven and Saint Peter's there, even though there's really no, you know, anyway. So he meets Saint Peter at heaven's gates and, and Saint Peter says, man, we've been expecting you, Joe Bob, we're so excited for you. Let me take you to your house. And so the preacher who preached all of his life and, and he did these great things, he, he's walking down, he's going, man, in his mind, he's going, man, I'm gonna have the biggest mansion. I bet my house is right next to Billy Graham. I bet my house is right next to TD Jakes or, or Mother Teresa or something, you know? He's got all these ideas in his mind. And, and Saint Peter takes him by these huge mansions. And the preacher goes, is that my mansion? No, not that one. And he keeps on going and the mansions keep getting a little smaller. The, the size of the lots get a little bit smaller. And, 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 and the preacher keeps going, well, is that my house? Is that my house? And Saint Peter's like, no, no, just keep following me. And then all of a sudden, he sees that the houses are kind of really going down in size and, and they're just going from these two-story mansions down to like these single-story starter home, looking starter homes. And he's like, man, I wonder where we're going. And, and then he goes through like, you know, the, the really small houses. He ultimately ends up at a shack. And, and Saint Peter says, hey, here's your house. And the preacher's like, well, why didn't I get the mansion back there? And he goes, well, because what you did, you didn't send us much material to build your house with. You didn't do much that God created you to do. He goes, well, I preached. He goes, yeah, but you preached for your own glory. Well, I led a church, you just led the church because you got paid. Well, I did. And so what happened is, is we get judged is the basis of that joke. I totally butchered it, but, but we get judged. Listen to this, let's, let me go straight to Scripture. Let's get serious. Matthew sixteen twenty-seven. Listen to this, "For the son of man will come in the glory of his father with his angels." And then he will reward each according to his works. Second Corinthians five ten, "We must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ, that each one may receive the things done in the body according to what he has done, whether good or bad." Matthew twenty-five twenty-one, "His Lord said to him, 'Well done, good and faithful servant. You were faithful over a few things; I will make you ruler, I will make you ruler over many things. Enter into the joy of the Lord.'" Let me ask you a question. Are there gonna be rulers in heaven? Absolutely. Are there gonna be governors in heaven? Absolutely. Will be, will there be princes over a territory of the kings? Absolutely. See, how you handle the small is how you'll handle the big. Now, before you just take that to how you'll handle the ten dollars of earthly currency is how you'll handle the hundred dollars of earthly currency is how you'll handle the million dollars of earthly currency. How you handle earthly currency regardless of how much you have is how you'll handle eternal currency. How you handle your position as third grade school teacher would be the exact same way as how God would, how you would handle your position as third grade teacher in heaven. Oh, there, there's gonna be third grade teachers in heaven? Absolutely. God didn't give you the gift of teaching just on earth. You're gonna train children in heaven. Oh, I've never heard of that before. There's a lot of things that we've not allowed ourselves to read out of Scripture. Heaven is a place, how you handle your job on earth is how you'll handle it in heaven. How you coach the team on earth? The profanity that you use or you don't use? The influence that you have over seventh grade boys and what you teach them is sportsmanlike. And what you teach them about being a man? How you handle those seventh grade boys at that ragtag football team is the exact same way as how you'll handle if you were to get that same position in heaven. God says, if you can't handle this on earth, which is small. Listen, what President Trump handles on earth is small in comparison to the gift that God would give him in heaven if he handles it well. Well, the United States is big in our mind. Yeah, a million dollars, a billion dollars is big in our mind, but it's small compared to heavenly currency. Read this verse with that vantage point. "The Lord said to him," Matthew twenty-five twenty-one, "Well done, good and faithful servant. You were faithful over a few things on earth; I'll make you a ruler over many things in heaven. Enter into the joy of your Lord." Enter into heaven. Revelation two, "Do not fear any of those things which you are about to suffer." Hey Cameron, don't worry about what you suffer on earth. "Indeed, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison, that you may be tested and have tribulation for ten days. Be faithful unto death, and I'll give you the crown of life." Matthew six four, "That your charitable deeds may be done in secret, that your Father, who sees in secret, will himself reward you openly." Remember when Jesus says, if you're ashamed of me on earth, my Father will be ashamed of you in heaven before his angels? You wanna know one of the coolest rewards you could ever receive? Is the day that you walk into heaven and God himself gets on the loudspeaker, attention, attention, I need all of my angels, Michael, Gabriel, come in from battle. All of you angels, large and small, line up. And they're all gonna be like, what's going on? What, I know we don't usually do this, but line up. I want all my angels lining up on the street. I want all my angels in order, come on, straighten up, get in, in the ranks. And all the angels are in attention. And God himself says, blows this horn, and he says, I just want you to know that John Smith's coming into heaven right now. Johnny, welcome and meet all my angels. And John's like, oh my God. And God himself is rewarding him by introducing him to all of his angels. And John's going, what, what did I do to ever deserve that? And other people in heaven are going, man, God didn't do that for me when I entered. Wow, what did John do? And God says, just, just in case all of you are wondering why I did this special thing for John here, John was never ashamed to introduce me to his friends on earth, whether it was his boss, whether it was his best friends, his kids, his, his family members or the stranger across the street. He never once backed down and was shy. So because he introduced me on earth, I'm introducing him on heaven. What a reward. What a reward. If a famous person came to town, your favorite politician or athlete or movie star, and they introduced you to one of their best friends, you would want to meet that best friend because you like that star. It's a reward. First Corinthians three, listen to this. This is a long passage, but you gotta hear it. "Now he who plants and he who waters are one; and each one will receive his own reward according to his labor. Now if anyone builds on this foundation with gold, silver, stone, precious stone, wood, hay, straw, each one's work will become clear; for the day will declare it, because it will be revealed by fire. The fire will test each one's work of what sort it is. If anyone's work, which he has built on it, endures, he will receive a reward; and if anyone's work is burned, he will suffer loss. But he himself, he himself will be saved as yet through fire." Listen, I can't say anymore for this study, but God wants to reward you. He's given you a mission. You may be eighty, you may be eight. You may be on the end of your life or you may have a hundred years ahead of you. It doesn't matter when you start. God says, get to work today. I've still left you here so that you could write that check and fund that ministry. I left you here so that you could move yourself and your family to that country and be the missionary that I called you to be at fourteen, when you, when you wanted to go and then you let the things of this world distract you. Listen, I still need you to write that book and publish it. I don't, I didn't ask for you to get famous, I just need you to publish it because I only want, there's only one person in this world that's gonna read it. And that one person, you're gonna change their life. And that one person will then turn into the next Billy Graham. See, I don't know what God's called you to do. It may be large in the earthly perspective, maybe God's calling you to politics. Back in the day, the church said, oh, business and, and church, God doesn't call anybody to politics. That's a lie. God's put a passion in your heart to be a politician. Go be a politician for Jesus. Be the politician that doesn't take the bribe. How you handle the small is how you would handle the big. There's a reward waiting for you. Satan wants you to whine and moan and groan when you go through trials, tribulations. But a good drill sergeant puts his soldiers through hell during boot camp. Well, you know, puts them through the wringer. Why? Because he knows the day they step on the shores of Vietnam or Afghanistan, it's playtime's over. And he's not out to hurt them in boot camp. He's out to train them and push out of them fear and laziness and, and, you know, being afraid, you know, whatever. He's there to push them to that next level. God is pushing you. You can get mad at him all you want, but he's not gonna back down. He's gonna keep pushing you because he wants you to win. Amen. Look at this next verse, verse twelve, James chapter one. James chapter one, verse twelve, "Let no one say when he is tempted." Now listen to this. "Let no one say when he is tempted; I am tempted by God." Now, a trial would not be God dangling cocaine in front of you. Now, a trial would not be God dangling cocaine in front of you. If you struggle with cocaine, God's not gonna tempt you with this kinda trial. He's not gonna say, ooh, here's some cocaine. See, because he's not gonna tempt, a trial isn't tempting, is not temptation. A trial is something that's proving that you can endure it. Temptation is what Satan puts in front of you to stumble, to fall. Let no one say when he is tempted that I'm tempted by God, for God cannot be tempted by evil, nor does he himself tempt anyone with sin. When Jesus was in the garden of Gethsemane, he was going through a trial. And that trial was Jesus's will versus God's will. God didn't put temptation in front of Jesus. He doesn't put a seductive woman in your path at work. God doesn't put a seductive woman in front of you at work to test you, do you really love your wife? Let's see if Cameron really loves his wife. I'm gonna put this really hottie mama, this hottie mama in front of him every day at work and and she's gonna hit on him. Jesus would never do that. That's not a tempt, that's not a, a trial. That's a temptation. And God doesn't do that. Satan does that. And he doesn't do it to see, well, does Cameron really love his wife? No, he does that to get my eyes off of the prize called my bride and onto the trick of the enemy to destroy everything God is building. Because when I stand before God, I'm gonna be accountable and rewarded, or I'll lose based on how I handled my bride, how I handled my wife, how I handled the entity called my marriage, the Corbin family. See, the devil tempts us with sin. God tries us to improve us, to pure us, to, to, um, to, to to make us firm and steadfast. Temptation never comes from God. Verse twelve. Now, if any, oh, I'm sorry, verse, uh, verse thirteen. Let no one say when he's tempted, I'm tempted by God, for God cannot be tempted by evil, nor does he tempt anyone. Fourteen, but each one is tempted when he's drawn away by his own desires and enticed. Now, listen to the progression. Take out a highlighter and mark this or a pen. It says this. Then when desire has conceived, it gives birth to sin, and sin, when it's full grown, brings death. Not all temptation comes from the devil. We'll find out later in the book of James, there's three sources for temptation. So write them down and we'll talk about the three levels of sin also. There's three sources of temptation. The world, my flesh, and Satan. So the world has its own temptation. My flesh has its own temptation, and the devil himself has my, has his own temptation. So in this case, when my flesh draws me to something else. Now, what, what we need to grasp is that our flesh is our biggest enemy to our walk with Christ. My flesh does not want to suffer. My flesh does not wanna go through temptation, I mean, trial. My flesh does not want to submit to God. My flesh wants to rule me. Now, my flesh is this outward part of my being. Jesus will heal my flesh, but he doesn't save my flesh. I want you to really think about that. All through scripture, Jesus healed people's sick bodies. He healed blind eyes. He healed broken legs. He healed all sorts of physical, uh, um, uh, pain and and disease and struggle. But he never once touched anybody and said, you know what? You're gonna live forever in this physical body. Not even Lazarus, who he raised from the dead. Lazarus died again. Bible doesn't tell us. It might have been ten years later, twenty years later, could have been forty years later, but at some point Lazarus died again in his flesh. Mother, Jesus's own mother died in her flesh. Your flesh is not being saved. It's your soul. So our flesh draws us to sin. When I get enticed to sin, let's say it's just stealing something that I don't, I don't wanna work so hard for. And and it's, it, there's different levels of stealing. And the temptation that that faces kids may be to steal that candy bar from the store. Or that temptation for the teenager may be to steal those shoes from the store. But the temptation for an adult may be to steal, uh, by cheating on their taxes. Steal money from the United States government, or to steal hours from our boss and be on our cellphone instead of working. There's different levels, but when, when I go to steal something, my flesh draws me to it first. And I go, ooh, man, that would be so nice just to grab that diamond ring off the table and take it to the pawn shop and make some fast cash. That, man, that would be really good. Now, listen to the progression. When you're tempted, you're tempted by your own desires. That's why we have to take every thought captive. That's the warfare part. You know what? That's not my thought. I, I don't wanna steal that ring and take it to the pawn shop. Where did that come from? That, that's not who Cameron is. That's the old flesh man trying to come back alive. That's not who God recreated in me. I, I wouldn't do that in a million years. That's not who I am. But when I give into that, look at what it is. When you're drawn away by your own desires and enticed, have you ever noticed that you don't usually sin in areas that you're not, that you don't want to? For some of you watching, um, there's no temptation in shooting black tar heroin into your arm right now. I could put four needles of black tar heroin on your dresser and you're like, what is that? And I said, oh, it's black tar heroin. Let's shoot it in our veins. And you'd be going, are you stupid? Who would do that? But the person across town would be going, oh, really? That's what that is? Oh, my God, 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 oh, my God. And they could not get that thought. See, sin brings you into what tempts you. Black tar heroin, Krispy Kreme doughnut. Krispy Kreme doughnut, black tar heroin, Krispy Kreme doughnut. Which one's gonna get Cameron? Which one's gonna get, are you with me? My own flesh draws me away. Then when desire has conceived, when it gets birthed, it gives birth to sin. Where does sin start? It starts in my mind. It starts in my flesh. It starts in my man, inside man, and it starts to come out. Then it gives birth to sin, and sin, when it is full grown, brings death. Now, Adam learned that death didn't come instantly. In Adam's case, it came about nine hundred years later. But it instantly came spiritually, and it came death to innocence and death to life as normal. A lot of our sin brings death to our relationships, death to our physical body. You may, you may do something now and not feel the effects for twenty-five years, but at some point, it's gonna bring death. God is saying, listen, run from sin. God doesn't bring that sin. Satan brings it. Verse sixteen. Don't be deceived, my brother. Every good gift and every perfect gift is from above. It comes down from the Father of Lights. I love that title to God. The Father of Lights, uh, is, is deep. A guy named Chuck Missler, uh, does a rev- does a Genesis Bible study. I would highly encourage you to watch it in, on YouTube. It's about thirty hours. He breaks it up into one-hour segments. But watch the study on light. He talks about God as light. In the beginning, there was light. And I'll mention it briefly, but he does a really good basis from a scientific standpoint and a biblical standpoint. Every good and perfect gift is from, from above. It comes down from the Father of Lights, which there is no variation or shadow of turning. There's no backside to God. There's no, uh, dark side to God. There's no, there's no shadow when it comes to God. There's no, there's no, um, uh, part of God that is a corrupt area. There's a shadow to you and there's a shadow to me. There's a dark side to us. There's a corrupt side of us. There's the side that we show everybody. There's a side that very few people, if anybody knows, because we keep it well disguised. There's no shadow of turning with God. He's the same on the front as he is the back on the right. He's the same yesterday, today, and forever. He is God. There's no variation to him. Jesus is the light of the world. The unchangeability of God, there's no parallax. Uh, and he's infinite. There's no end. There's no, um, shadow. It, it's very interesting. Genesis chapter one, day one, God says, let there be light. Jesus is the light of the world. Revelation, at the end of the, in the Bible, it says in Revelation twenty-one twenty-three that the city of Zion needs no sun because Jesus is the light. When Jesus takes his disciples to the, to the Mount of Transfiguration, he shows them the glory, the Shekinah light of God, the glory of God. It's very interesting in creation that on day one, there was light, but day four, God creates the sun. The sun and the light are two different things. One, we, we think they're the same, but the light of God is this thing that he doesn't change. He doesn't one day turn dark and put sexual perversion in front of you. He doesn't dance this dangle, this carrot of temptation. That's not God. That's the devil. Let's start fighting Satan and not, and quit blaming God. See, sometimes the devil is so cunning that he dangles this other man or woman in front of us and says, oh, you married the wrong person. Oh, you're out of love with your original bride. She's out of, he's out of love with you, you're out of love with him. Those are dece- that's deception from the enemy. That's not a trial. That's a temptation. And temptations, we are to take authority o- over in the name of Jesus and to cast out, to push out. We're not to give it birth. Think about it like this. How does murder take place? Even a murder of passion, even if it was a split second, it first started in the mind. The flesh said, or it first starts in the flesh. The flesh says, take that gun and shoot that person for what they did to you. And then your mind starts to entertain it and gives it birth. Then it's a matter of time till your physical body actually picks up the gun and you commit the deed. Jesus says, hey, listen, if you have hatred in your heart, you've already committed murder. Cameron, if you're lusting after that image on the computer screen, you've already committed adultery with her. If you're laughing at that sexual perverted joke, you've already committed adultery. You've already done that which you're laughing at. When, when we put it in real terms, i- it should scare us. We're, like, I don't wanna watch that. I don't want to have that anger in my heart where I'm like, you know what? It's a good thing that they got hurt. It's a good thing they got fired. It's a good thing. Well, I hope that hurt them. You know, I, I'm glad they wrecked their brand-new car. They're all cocky and arrogant. Oh, I'm judging that person. I'm, I'm projecting something on them that I've already allowed to birth inside of me. The Bible says, the eyes are the gate to the soul. Have you ever seen into the eyes of another person? Have you ever seen into their soul? Have you seen what's birthed on the inside? Perversion, rage, deception, idolatry, pride. You can see it. And even though they may not have done the deed out here, you could see it's full-born on the inside. It's full, it's a full-born. That's why in the beginning of a child's life, we gotta teach them young and correct them young to cut those things out. In the, in the infancy of our Christian walk, we gotta cut these things out. That's what James is saying. I hope I did justice on that. Look at, at verse eighteen in chapter one. Of his own will, he brought, brought us forth by the word of truth, that we may be a first fruits, a kind of first fruits of his creation. So then, my beloved brethren, let every man be swift to hear, slow to speak, slow to wrath. For the wrath of man does not produce the righteousness of God. Listen, you're either gonna love James or you're gonna hate it. When James starts to, he doesn't pull punches. He just said, hey, listen, he, and he gives these three steps. If, if you'll start finding threes all in it. He's like, hey, listen, uh, over here, it's your flesh, dummy, that draws you to temptation. It's not always the devil. Hey Cameron, it's your flesh, and when you give into that, it's gonna conceive, it's gonna, it's gonna give birth. And then when it gives birth, it's gonna be full grown, and when it's full grown, it's gonna bring death. Hey, listen, Cameron, over here, I want you to be s- swift to hear, slow to speak, slow to anger, for the anger of man does not produce the righteousness of God. We live in a time where we watch a video and boy, we're quick to throw in our two cents. And we're quick to let that image bring anger, and then we're quick to move in our own anger. We're quick to make these judgments. We live in a day and age where we are taught to speak up and to stand our ground and not back down. If you get punched, punch back twice as hard. If you get talked about, you gossip twice as much. Listen, James is telling us, the word of God is saying, Cameron, be swift to hear, slow to speak. How many times in our lives have we been slow to hear and quick to speak? We're so quick to speak, we cut people off mid-sentence. We're so sw- swift to speak that we don't hear half of the story and we punish our kids. We're so swift to speak that we don't hear half of the truth. We just hear one side of the story. Well, Pastor so-and-so did this. Oh, I can't believe it. And we don't even take the time to go ask the other side of the story. James is saying, hey, listen, you wanna be a mature believer? You want, you want somebody, you know, how do we know mature believers? They're swift to listen, slow to speak, slow to anger. It's a hard thing. It's such a hard thing to shut my mouth. It's so hard. But the Lord has been teaching us as a church, close your mouth, be slow to speak, slow to anger. I don't know about you. I don't know how well you're grading yourself on all three. I don't know what your grade is, one to ten. But the maturity in the Lord, because this starts back here in preconceived. It's conce- it's conceived in our flesh. It's birthed and it's full grown. Here we go. Twenty-one, therefore lay aside all filthiness, Cameron, and overflow of wickedness, and receive with meekness the implanted word which is able to save your soul. Again, Jesus cares about your body, but he's not saving your body. Ashes to ashes, dust to dust. Your body is not being resurrected. What's being resurrected is your soul. And your soul will inhabit a new body, the perfect you. You'll look like you. You'll have your same characteristics, your same skin tones, your same eye color. I mean, all the things that make you you. You're not gonna be a different person. We're not gonna all look alike in heaven. There's gonna be distinctions. But you'll be the perfect you. Be doers of the word and not hearers only. Deceiving yourself, again, three steps. Doers, hearers, deception, or, or, uh, be doers of the word, Cameron, not hearers only. Deceiving yourself. How many of us are deceived that we're good Christians because we go to church and hear the word? Ah, no, I just said that. How many of us are good Christians? Well, I go to church every Sunday. I'm a good Christian. I go to, I go to church. I sing the songs. I put the money in the plate and I listen to the pastor and I take notes. I'm a good hearer. Okay. Um, I don't think we'll go to heaven and be judged for our hearing. I think we go to heaven and get judged for our works. Listen, James is gonna hammer this the whole time. If you don't like this, just, I'm just telling you now, just don't listen to the rest of them, because I mean, it's, it's in, it's in your face. Cameron, be a doer. I do not care how many sermons- I do not care how many sermons you listen to. In fact, what you're doing is you're just deceiving yourself. Ah, I'm a good Christian. I, I can memorize all the books. I've memorized fourteen verses. I know who wrote it. I know where, what their people they were talking to, what year they wrote it. Uh, I know the Greek definition of those words, cuz I've been listening. Okay, but I need you to be a doer. For if anyone is a hearer of the word and not a doer, uh-oh, he is like a man observing his face in the mirror. For he observes himself, goes away, and immediately forgets what kinda man he was. But he who looks into the law of liberty and continues in it and is not a forgetful hearer, but a doer of the work, this one will be blessed in what he does. Listen, this is a mirror, this Bible. And so, when I'm reading the Bible and I'm looking and it looks back and I see, ooh, Cameron's not patient. Cameron's not kind. Ooh, Cameron and, oh, yeah. Nope, no, I'm, I'm quick to judge. I'm fast, boy, I've just got a short fuse, I was born. I just get, listen. When I look in the mirror, the mirror's the word of God. And then I forget. You know when I, you know a telltale sign that you forgot what the mirror is, is when we're judging everybody else and saying, can you believe what she's wearing to church? Can you believe that he is, is coming into church with his hat on? He should take his hat off in the house of God. That's just the most disrespectful guy ever. Can you believe they got tattoos? Can you believe he is out back smoking a cigarette right now? I mean, all of a sudden, we just forgot who we were. Listen. Cameron, be a doer. Did you know that in, in our business, Stacy and I own our business, and we employ, you know, well, we did. We're, we are reemploying some people right now, yes. Uh, ma- maybe that's not the best, uh, thing right now. Uh, on the, anyways, we own our own business. I would much rather an employee go do and do wrong than just to sit there and wait to hear from me to tell them what to do. Johnny, go, go, uh, you know, clean the restrooms. I would rather him go do it and do it wrong than just to listen to me tell him to do it and he not do it, because he's afraid of doing it wrong. I can work with somebody that at least is doing. I say, man, you're doing this part great, but listen, the way we gotta clean this is like this, you know? And, and where we put these items are over on this shelf, not this shelf, and the way we talk to that customer is, you know, you did good on the beginning, but you kinda ended it bad, so let's, let's rework that. I would rather you do and do wrong than to not do at all. That's what James is saying. It's time, Satan wants you to think that you've got to share the gospel the way somebody else does it, because in your mind, they do it right. God's saying, no, no, you just go do and I'll train you in the do. Not, don't be a hearer. Verse twenty-six. If any of you thinks he is religious, this one's gonna get you right here, just, I'm telling you. If you think you're religious. Oh, I, I'm not about religion. Well, James is in this verse, so this ain't talking about religion. This is religious, not religion, religious. Religious is the action. So, if any of, if anyone thinks that you're religious, but does not bridle his tongue, he deceives his own heart. This one's religion is useless. Pure and undefiled religion before God the Father is this. Now, i- it's so crazy. He just talked about, hey, if you think you're religious, but, but your tongue is over here dropping the F-bomb because you think you can be a Christian and drop the F-bomb and it not taint your religion or not taint Jesus, you can be a Christian and come over here and tell dirty jokes and talk like all the guys at work, or you could be a Christian and yell at people or be rude to them at the store. Or you could be frustrated and you could just say things that you're not thinking about. If you think that you're a Christian and you have religion, but you can't bridle your own tongue, you're just deceiving your heart. And basically, your religion is useless because it's all talk. Twenty-seven, pure and undefiled religion before God and the Father is this, Cameron. Visit orphans and widows in their trouble and keep yourself unspotted from the world. Uh, well, what, where, where is the part about talking? I didn't ask you to talk. I asked you to go do. Well, wh- what do you want me to do with them orphans over there? Want you to feed them? Oh, that's why I gave you that five-bedroom house, dummy? Oh, no, no, I, I know you wanna be in that gated community up on the hill over there in the rich boy land, but listen, I put you there and you just thought it was a good deal in the house. I put you there because they got the best school system in town. Oh, I know that your kids, uh, uh, are out of school, but listen, you gotta go get the kids to fill the house. Pure undefiled religion is to visit orphans and widows in their time of trouble. And hey, Cameron, keep yourself unspotted from the world. Listen, James makes it so simple. Don't just talk, go do. It, it's the same in my own life. Listen, I, I can talk a good game, I, but man, it's hard to go lay hands on sick people. I can, I can talk a good game, it's hard to write a check and donate money. I can talk a good game, it's hard to stop busy life and go sit down with that person at Starbucks and just listen to their problems. Hey, listen, I can talk a big game, but it's really hard to go pay for that car repair. Or repair that car, whatever. Go be a doer. God's calling you to go do. Why? Cuz he wants you to be exhausted and he wants you to pay the price of your salvation? No. Cuz he wants to reward you. He says, if you'll just go do with the right heart and the right motive, now I'm gonna reward you greatly. And your reward will be that person. But your reward will also be something different, and I know we're not doing it for the rewards. But oh, how cool it will be to run the race and win. Kinda getting amen. I'm gonna close with this. Here are some characteristics of hearers only. People that just hear the word of God compare themselves one to another and say, I'm not that bad. Look at that guy. That guy's horrible. Hearers are superstitious. They got a lot of crosses, they go to church attendance is good, they do a lot of good things, but they just carry this superstitious, magical religion. First Samuel four talks about when the men and women of the Old Testament take the ark of the covenant and they don't do it in the way God tells them to, but they do it as a good luck charm to win. Um, hearers only have emotional responses to the word of God, and we just do it when we feel good. Uh, hearers only have a lot of doctrine, a lot of theology, a lot of knowledge, a lot of intellectual assent, but not a lot of heart commitment. Cuz you can see it all over them. Doers are obedient when it's tough and uncomfortable. Doers are uncompromising in their walk in action. Doers have a relationship with Jesus. And doers put their faith in action. Listen, James is about action. He's saying, get out there and do it. This week, by Thursday, would you do me a favor? Would you just, let's just all try to do what God wants us to do. I didn't say go do something for God. Do what he wants you to do. And just say, God, I wanna be a doer today. God's gonna give you your assignment. God bless you. Thank you so much for watching. We'll be back Thursday, six-thirty. We'll pick up in James, chapter two. Uh, and jump in from there. God bless you. Thank you for joining us. See you next time.